We'll call this regular business meeting of the Town of Clayton to order and ask that you stand as we pledge allegiance to our flag and remain standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which is founded, established, and invincible, with due justice.
Let us pray. Dear Lord, we thank you for this day and thank you for allowing us to come together for this meeting tonight. We ask that you guide our minds, hearts, and our judgment as we conduct the business for the Town of Clayton. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen. Are there any adjustments to the agenda?
Mayor Protem, I would like to make an adjustment. I would like to remove item 3E from the consent agenda and move it to 4A administrative items.
So noted. Anybody have any opposition?
Aye.
Thank you. I will entertain a motion to approve the adjusted agenda.
Second.
We have a motion in the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Next up is going to be item 4A, the SRO contract. Let Mr. Coppola speak to that.
So as previously discussed at our work session, this is our standard contract to go ahead and allow for the chief to hire an SRO and place them at the charter school.
All right. The reason we removed this is so that we could have a vote. Myself and council member Everett are members of that school board, so we very humbly ask that we be recused from the vote in this situation. At this time, I'll entertain a motion regarding the SRO contract.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries.
Yes, sir.
Did we vote on the consent agenda or just on the motion to approve your agenda?
Exactly right. Thank you. Thank you, Jim. At this time, I will entertain a motion to approve the entire consent agenda. And Mr. Coppola has one comment.
Yep, one clarifying point on that. Item 3F, the ECCP fields collaboration, that encompasses both the Carolina Comfort Air sponsorship as well as the Neuse River Football Alliance, the NERFA agreement. So just want to clarify, that's two items in that.
Thank you. So noted. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries. Next up, we have some introductions and special presentations. First, I will read a proclamation regarding National Community Planning Month. After I read the proclamation, we'll ask our planning staff to come forward and we'll present the certificate and have a photo opportunity. Whereas change is constant and affects all cities, towns, suburbs, counties, boroughs, townships, rural areas, and other places. And whereas community planning and plans can help manage this change in a way that provides the better choices for how people work and live. And whereas community planning provides an opportunity for all residents to be meaningfully involved in making choices that determine the future of their community. And whereas the full benefits of planning requires public officials and citizens who understand, support, and demand excellence in planning and plan implementation. And whereas the month of October is designated as National Community Planning Month throughout the United States of America and its territories. And whereas the celebration of National Community Planning Month gives us the opportunity to publicly recognize the participation and dedication of the members of planning commissions and other citizen planners who have contributed their time and expertise to the improvement of the Town of Clayton. And now therefore, on behalf of the Town Council, Mayor Protem Jason Thompson hereby proclaim the month of October as National Community Planning Month and extend a heartfelt thanks for the continued commitment to the public service by these professionals proclaimed this second day of October 2023. And I ask our planning staff to come to the front and we'll present the proclamation. Next up is our Public Power Week proclamation. Whereas the Town of Clayton provides electricity to its citizens, and whereas the citizens of the Town of Clayton are consumers and owners of their public power systems and exercise local control over utility operations and policies. And whereas our employees are neighbors serving neighbors. And whereas our electric system is a community asset that contributes to the well-being of citizens by providing safe and reliable power, customer service, and economic development opportunities. And whereas the Town of Clayton is one of more than 70 public power communities serving more than 500,000 residential, commercial, and industrial customers in North Carolina. Now therefore, let it be proclaimed, on behalf of the Clayton Town Council, I hereby proclaim that October 1st through October 7th be recognized as Public Power Week, powering our community's future. To promote public power and recognize those who work to provide the best possible electric service for our citizens, proclaim this second day of October 2023. And I'd like our electric department to step forward. And last but not least, we have a proclamation for National Custodian Day. And I'm sure as many of you come in and look around, you see the amazing shape that the inside of this facility is in and how well it's maintained. And this staff is very important to us. And they provide a very valuable service and never known anything in my entire tenure as a council member other than a nice, clean, well-kept facility. So whereas each year on October 2nd, National Custodian Day is observed. And whereas custodians are the unsung heroes of our offices and many other commercial facilities. And whereas custodians are willing to learn and adapt to new technologies to make our facilities better for years to come. And whereas they are hard-working individuals who dedicate countless hours to providing a clean and safe environment for our staff and community who occupy those buildings. And whereas we are proud to recognize our custodians and recognize the hard work that it takes to keep our public facilities in tip-top shape and diligently work tirelessly to make sure our workplaces are spotless and sanitary. And whereas it's the Town of Clayton's commitment that every custodian is shown appreciation and thanks for all they do for our buildings and facilities. Now therefore, on behalf of the Town of Clayton, I hereby proclaim October 2nd, 2023 as National Custodian Day. Proclaim the second day of October 2023. You'll come forward. All right. Next up, we have public hearings. We have 2022-125C ZM Summer Glen Conditional Zoning with Master Plan.
While that's loading, I want to note Bruce was feeling unwell today, so you get to have me tonight, Jonathan, as the interim planning director. All right. Good evening, Mayor Protem, Town Council, Jonathan Jacobs, interim planning director and assistant engineering director. Tonight, I'm here to present a conditional rezoning request for the Summer Glen subdivision, case 2022-125-CZM, conditional zoning with master plan. The applicant is requesting to rezone the current properties located at the corner of Glen Laurel Road and Vincent Road in the Town of Clayton ETJ from RE Residential Estate zoning to conditional zoning residential, proposing up to 139 single-family detached homes with an overall project density of 2.6 units per acre. The property size is 53.06 acres and again, located on the corner of Glen Laurel Road and Vincent Road. Included in your staff report and on the screen is the proposed master plan. The applicant is showing on the, I guess that would be the north side of Glen Laurel Road and west side of Vincent Road, or I guess that would be the east side of Glen Laurel. They have two access points, one on Glen Laurel Road and one off of Vincent Road, a proposed stub to the property line adjacent, which is currently undeveloped, and then a proposed access point to the cul-de-sac on the other side of Glen Laurel Road. The proposed development again is detached, single-family homes. To the north of the property is residential estate zoning and residential use. To the south, residential estate. To the east, residential estate. And to the west, residential estate. Directly to the east is mostly undeveloped, but there are some single-family homes. The proposed density overall is 2.6 units per acre with a maximum of 139 total units. Again, access is off Glen Laurel and Vincent Road. Water and sewer utilities will be provided by the Town of Clayton and electric will also be provided by the Town of Clayton. So development standards, the proposed CZM will have a minimum lot size of 6,500 square feet, a minimum lot width of 60 feet with a maximum lot coverage of 70%, including 70% impervious or 36% of the overall site. Again, density of 2.6 units per acre, front setback of 21.5 feet, a side setback of six feet, side street setbacks, so for those corner lots, a 10-foot setback, and a rear setback of 15 feet. The total traffic generation from the project is a total of 1,370 daily trips, with 101 of those in the morning peak hour and 135 in the afternoon peak hour. And for reference, 100 peak hour trips is generally what triggers a TIA. The project will comply with the Town of Clayton stormwater ordinance in place today. Public water is available on both Glen Laurel Road and Vincent Road. And there's existing public sewer along Burke Dale Drive. The developer is proposing an off-site sewer extension to accommodate the parcel. And again, electric service is provided from the Town of Clayton. A Class C perimeter buffer with opaque fencing will be required along the entire perimeter of the development as required by Conditional Zoning District. And the interior landscaping and street trees will meet the Unified Development Code requirements. The applicant will provide at least 25% open space or a total of 13.25 acres to be preserved as recourse conservation area as well as open space. There are no public greenways in the immediate vicinity of the project, but the developer will be installing frontage improvements, which will include sidewalks along their frontage. And the architectural standards are provided in detail in the master plan narrative, but to name some, the front door features will have a window, transom window, or side light window, limited facade materials of fiber cement siding, brick, stone, wood, vinyl shake, and shingle. Here are some renderings that the applicant provided staff for proposed architectural elevations. Overall, they will be one- to two-story units with exterior color packages throughout the subdivision. Siding will be premium vinyl, lap siding, shake, board and batten. Facades will include masonry columns, front porch or covered stoop on every home, four-vehicle spaces of parking, side roof eaves of at least 10 inches, architectural style shingles, and side or rear patios with optional covered porches available. The Conditional Zoning District is considered consistent with the adopted plans and policies of the town. The 2045 Comprehensive Growth Plan calls for this area to be low-density residential, which, as recommended by the growth plan, provides a gross density of 1 to 3 units per acre, with the applicant providing a total of 2.6. And generally, less than 25% of the area used for single-family attached units, and the applicant is not proposing any attached units. The proposed density meets what is envisioned and called for in the 2045 growth plan and is consistent with the growth plan. Suitability of the subject project, our property, the current zoning permits low-density residential uses and is surrounded by residential uses. The proposed Conditional Zoning District permits low-density, single-family attached and detached development. And the applicant is proposing to connect to public water and extend public sewer to serve this development. Improvement of balance of use meets specific demand of the town. The area is comprised of residential uses primarily with single-family detached. And the proposed Conditional Zoning District allows for additional suburban-style, single-family detached use. Capacity of adequate public facilities and services. This development or this property will be served by Allotan Elementary School, Riverwood Middle, and Clayton High School. On the catalyst for 2022 and 2023 was Clayton High School. The roads will be accessed by both Glen Laurel and Vincent Road. Parks and Recreation Facilities are providing open space, wastewater treatment. The sewer, as mentioned, will be connected offsite through Burke Dale Drive, which is in the Glen Laurel subdivision, through a utility easement that was provided or in the process of being negotiated with Neuse Country Club. And the development is subject to the town's wastewater allocation, which you will consider following your consideration of tonight's Conditional Zoning. Water supply, public water again being available from Vincent Road, and then the development will follow the town's stormwater ordinance. Other criteria, legal purposes of zoning are not contravened, and all town ordinance procedures and approvals are being followed and will continue to be followed. No adverse effect on the adjoining property owners. The development will generally match the density and unit type of some of the surrounding developments. And improvements to existing public road network connectivity and public utility extensions will mitigate any impacts. No one property owner or small group will benefit or provide detriment to the general public. And with the staff recommended and applicant-approved recommended conditions, no detrimental impacts are expected to the general public. On your screen are the master plan approval criteria. I won't read these word for word, but in general, staff, or not in general, staff found the master plan to be consistent with the master plan, the master plan narrative, and proposed conditions to be consistent with these approval criteria. Considerations tonight for Town Council. Town Council shall consider the recommendation of the planning board and planning director. Town Council shall adopt a written statement of reasonable inconsistency if they do choose to move forward with the project. Action tonight, Town Council shall approve, approve with additional conditions, or deny the Conditional Zoning District, with the note that any additional conditions will have to be agreed upon by the applicant prior to any decision tonight. And once, if approved, the Conditional Zoning District, master plan and narrative will be recorded with the Johnson County Register of Deeds. And the zoning is entitled with the life, or runs with the land and does not expire unless rezoned again in the future. Staff is recommending approval of case 2022-125CZM, the Summer Glen subdivision Conditional Zoning District with master plan and the subject 14 recommended conditions. The planning board unanimously approved the Conditional Zoning District, subject to those 14 conditions and based on the proposed application criteria. And the planning board also approved or recommended a consistency statement, finding the project to be consistent with the 2045 growth plan and land use map, as well as the statement of reasonableness found at the end of this presentation. In your packet, there are those 14 conditions. I will not read all of these word for word. I do want to name off the modified standards here, number seven. So the maximum density will be 139 residential units with an overall density of 2.6 dwelling units per acre. The total site impervious will be 36% with a minimum lot size of 6,500 square feet. Setbacks will be revised to have a front setback of 21.5 feet, a setback from the sidewalk of 25 feet, a side setback from six feet, a corner side setback or that street side setback at 10 feet, and a rear setback of 15 feet with a maximum building height of 35 feet. Another condition to note is due to the size of the development, a gated emergency access with Knox box will be provided to a stub that they are providing to Glen Laurel Road. Staff worked with the developer or the applicant on this access point, and due to the offset of its intersection with the street on the other side of Glen Laurel, we decided it was best not to provide that as a full movement. And then the applicant will be required to install frontage improvements along their frontage, as well as installing the transportation improvements that are required by the TIA, specifically at the Glen Laurel and Vincent Road intersection. A signal improvement is already a funded project there, but if it is not constructed at the time of the development being completed, the applicant will be responsible for the construction of that, as well as providing one ingress and egress left turn lane on eastbound and westbound approaches of the site driveway on Glen Laurel Road, with at least 100 feet of internal protected STEM, northbound and southbound left turn lanes on Glen Laurel Road with 100 feet of full width storage and appropriate deceleration and taper lengths. And that'll follow the design criteria as required by NC DOT. And then on Vincent Road at the proposed site driveway, providing one ingress and egress lane with 100 feet of internal protected STEM, as well as a left turn lane, providing at least 100 feet minimum full width storage and appropriate deceleration. The following architectural standards are also conditioned as a part of the project. Number 13, all units shall be one- and two-story with a variety of craftsman colonial and transition-themed elevations, with home plans of the same elevation not set side by side or directly across from one another. Exterior color packages will enhance a variety of color throughout the neighborhood and will not be duplicated side by side. Siding elements are to include a mix of premium vinyl siding with varying patterns such as lap siding, shake, and board and batten materials per the proposed, or example, architectural elevations that I previously showed. All building facades to include a variety of craftsman columns with masonry square and round columns per elevation. And each home will either have a front porch or a covered stoop element that will lead, with a lead walk connecting to the driveway. Continuing, four vehicular parking spaces will be provided on each lot with a two-car loaded garage space, direct decorative garage door with glass windows and carriage details, and two parking spaces in the driveway. Side roof eaves, a minimum of 10-inch overhang, at least 25% masonry elements such as stone and brick on the front building facade. And architectural style shingles and side or rear patios to be provided on all units for outdoor living, as well as providing optional covered porches available per plan. So on the screen ahead of you, or in front of you, is the recommended statement of consistency and reasonableness. And the applicant is here as well to provide a presentation.
One question I have before we open the public hearing, and I probably missed it because there's a bunch of conditions. One of the conditions is that they come into the city limits?
Yes.
I just want to make sure that, I thought I probably missed it, but I wanted to make sure that that will come into the city limits.
Yes, and it's Yes, annexation is a requirement.
There'd be an opportunity for public comment in just a minute, but the question that I asked was would it become a part of the city limits?
Annexation is a requirement of conditional zoning district.
Thank you. All right. At this time, we'll...
Mr. Casey?
Yeah, Mr. Casey, question for staff.
Jonathan, thank you for that presentation. So you say it's currently zoned RE, and is that correct?
RE.
RE, okay, residential estate, I'm sorry. And under the, I guess, open space subdivision for an RE zoning designation, if they were not going the conditional route, can you explain that and kind of that process and square footage of lot size and such?
Sure. So by right, the applicant could submit a subdivision under the residential estate zoning district. It's a conventional zoning district with no action by council and achieve a density of 3.7 dwelling units per acre. But they would have to abide by all of the setbacks and minimum lot standards required for that conditional, or for that conventional zoning district.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Sims?
Thank you, Jonathan. Good presentation. Just a quick question. The elevations that are featured, are those the actual ones? The reason why I ask that question is because it was presented at the planning board meeting the other day, as far as in concerns to, those wasn't the actual ones?
I'll let the applicant comment on the specifics of the elevation. Those were examples provided. They are not necessarily conditioned or a part of the narrative, so I'll let the applicant speak to the specifics of the elevations.
Thank you.
All right. As this has been noted as a public hearing, we'll open the public hearing, and I'll ask to hear from the applicant first.
Do you have a presentation? No. Anything you'd like to leave out before you?
Just a map of the site plan.
If you're ready, you want an actual map, that's good. Right there. We'll get around if we need to. You can just hit these arrows. Appreciate it.
Evening, Mr. Mayor Protem, members of the council. Brett Hannah, I'm an attorney with Nelson Mullins, representing the applicant in this rezoning application. As staff has presented, we work very closely with the staff on how to proceed in this. The conditional zoning was the process that they preferred, which allows you to put the conditions on the development in the manner that you want. As discussed, the plan follows closely the comprehensive 2045 plan. The density is lower than the density that's sought in that comprehensive plan. We worked with staff in regard to the buffers, to work with them through the process of them approving new buffers, and have agreed to the new buffers that they developed along the way. Also, worked with them on the improvements, off-site improvements for the roadways. The NC DOT signal that was mentioned earlier in the presentation by staff has been approved and will be installed, and that'll be installed prior to us coming online with this project. We do have the open space, and with that, also with the recreational facilities, in addition to talking to the News Club, we're talking to Riverwood, also the Flatworths YMCA, and also the Racket Club, just to provide some options for our future residents and to make sure that we're complying with the desires of the town. It will be annexed. The property will be annexed. It's one of the conditions to the conditional zoning, which will bring us into the public water and sewer, and as I said, the off-site improvements for the roadways. We have a number of experts with us who can answer in more detail, more granular questions that the board may have. We have a traffic expert with us called Daggenhart. We also have a certified appraiser, Rich Kirkland, and we have the development, the director of development for Wakefield, Mike Bost, and we have also the president of Chesapeake Homes, who will be building the homes and can answer the questions about the elevations that were asked earlier in the proceeding. I would open it up to your questions and call forward the experts who are best suited to answer the question, if I can't answer it myself, if that's how you'd like to go.
Yes, sir, that sounds fine. Any questions for the applicant?
Mr. Casey?
I do have a question. So I see the density calculation based on the RCAs. What is the density calculation if you separate those RCA areas out of the project?
I'll bring Andrew Stock, our engineer, who did the site plan and has worked with staff extensively on how to make those.
Mr. Casey, I'm sorry, I don't have a specific answer to your question, but in just looking at what the 2045 comprehensive development plan that was approved, that we're following and planning, it does state that the gross residential density is defined as the number of dwelling units divided by the total project area without subtracting areas devoted to open space, right-ofways, parks, or similar public use and infrastructure areas. So that's one of the reasons why I don't have a specific answer to that in our, just our uses or any of our calculations on our cover sheet, so that's...
So that can't be figured out? If we give you five minutes?
I mean, I don't have specific areas. I could get close, but it shouldn't, I don't feel like it should have any effect on the approval process.
I have no further questions.
While you're there, sir, could you please state your name for the clerk post?
Absolutely, yes, sir. My name is Andrew Stocks, the civil engineer. Our address is 801 East Washington Street, Nashville, North Carolina.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions?
Yes, sir, I have a question. Thank you for the presentation, and I was wondering if you could explain if you think that the lot sizes proposed, especially the lots that would be in the 6,500 square-foot range, if you think those are consistent with the neighborhoods of the surrounding area?
It's consistent with the comprehensive plan and addresses the growth that Johnston County is currently having. Is it the same lot size as the current lots that are around it? No, but it is of lot sizes that are not out of place, and I believe Mr. Kirkland can address the effect on values. That's part of what he has done in his impact analysis, if you'd like to hear from him. I'm sure he can go through that.
Sure, thank you.
Sorry, sir, before he shares about the residential values, I would say the property that's to the south on the other side of Vincent Road has a similar density and property size. I don't know exactly what those were, but there was a piece of that that touches at the intersection of Glen Laurel and Vincent Road on the south side. And then the properties to the east and west and north are, I think to the north, are 10, and then, which would be a 10,000 square-foot minimum, and then the properties to the west and the east are the larger RE current zoning.
Thank you, that was an excellent answer. Thank you.
And again, my name's Rich Kirkland with Kirkland Appraisals. Just following up on the question about the lots, we did an analysis just looking at the property values, but part of that was addressing the question of smaller lots adjoining larger lots. We've got a lot of examples in our reports, and there's a lot more I could provide. I mean, you can even see it across the street. Summer Glen subdivision backs up to our 10 land and has smaller lots adjoining some of those larger lots. We're just not seeing any negative impact from that. It's very common, and in fact, a lot of mixed-use developments, you have mixes of uses of larger lots and smaller lots within the same community. But the examples we looked at measuring for property value impacts were not part of a mixed-use development, but a subdivision next to another subdivision to look for that.
Thank you for that. And just to be clear, you were using general terms, which I understand, small and large and that sort of thing. Could you confirm for me if any of the examples you looked at included lots the smallest 6,500 square feet?
Some of the examples I put in here, I don't know actually the lot sizes. They're just a visual representation. You can see that we have lots that are roughly a third the size of the ones they adjoining.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Sims?
Yes, could somebody speak to me about the elevations?
Yes, go ahead.
Are those, are these the actual ones?
They're elevation options that the ultimate customer will have the options to choose. There could be some additional ones. It's the same builder that's developing the Highgate subdivision that's also in the town of Clayton, so those same choices they have in the Highgate subdivision would be the same options for this development.
So these ones right here are, or they're not, the actual ones?
Those are some of the options. There are additional options.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. I would also add, just from a previous question, just some additional information, that this zoning, the CZM zoning with this lot size and the setbacks, has been something that we've been working with the town and staff since our pre-application meeting back in April of 2022. So that's part of just the long process that has been into kind of getting us to this point, as to why we've ended up here, and part of that was from recommendation from the staff from some of those early meetings.
Mr. Casey?
Sorry, I have two more questions. I don't really give up. So what's the RCA, the square footage or the acreage for the RCA area within this parcel?
Yeah, we really haven't begun our design and our full-site topo and boundary yet, so I'm not sure what the actual areas are. I do, we understand there's a steep slope ordinance and those resource conservation areas, there's a whole section in the ordinance, and we know the staff's worked very hard to kind of make that clear in the ordinance, and we will definitely follow those. I just, I don't have specific areas on the existing slopes, how many acres of existing wetlands, the buffer, there's a stream buffer in the middle. I don't have those specific areas at this point in our design process.
So when you were doing your due diligence, there wasn't any idea or approximation, at least?
Well, yeah, we know there's a stream buffer in the middle. We had the buffer surveyed. We have had an environmental analysis done on the wetlands. I don't know the exact areas of those, and we've done what we can to mitigate those and reduce our impact to those by crossing the buffer at a 90-degree that would have just the least amount of impact as possible. So we've taken that into account as much as we could at this point in the process.
Okay, and then one other question. Was this also the parcel that went to the Board of Adjustments?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Well, I did not hear that Board of Adjustments hearing, but is there a summary of what, I guess, the BLA request was or variance was?
Yeah, so the variance request that was brought to the Board of Adjustments was a variance for the frontage widening improvements that are required. So the frontage widening improvements include a center turn lane through, each, a lane for each direction, a bike lane each direction, a curb and gutter section, and then a sidewalk on each side of the street. We understand there was some concern about pedestrian safety crossing the roads in some nearby areas with some incidents within the last couple of years, and then we also had concern about the nature of the existing drainage, with everything kind of around the site being a shoulder section, which would be a ditch on the side of the road, and now we're introducing a section that's just curb and gutter. So our specific variance request was to push off and not perform the frontage widening. That was denied by the Board of Adjustments, and so we are proposing with our current plan to provide those, the frontage widening along our portion of Vincent Road and then on both sides of Glen Laurel Road where our project does front the street. Those widenings as a part of our conditions. The frontage improvements will be kind of built in correlation with the phases that connect to that street. So when we have our Phase 1 connection to Vincent Road, we will do the frontage improvements to Vincent Road, and then when we move to our phase that connects to Glen Laurel Road, we will perform the frontage improvements on that side of the road and so on and so forth. As our project progresses, we will install the frontage widening improvements with that. Yes, sir.
Any other questions?
Follow up on one of the prior answers. As we move forward through the process, we'll be working closely with staff, also with the Corps of Engineers, to get all of the approvals, the permits, and all of the processes that are necessary as we move forward through the process. We will comply with all of the UDO provisions and any type of regulation that exists for the development. And also, as far as the elevations is concerned, we have the president of our home builder, John Barnes, who can address those questions in more detail if you would like.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. Hi, my name is John Barnes. I'm the president of Chesapeake Homes, and the elevations that we've shown are mostly the elevations that have been at this, our community in Clayton called Highgate. Typically, each different plan that we offer has three, at least three different elevations, a craftsman elevation, a coastal elevation, and a colonial elevation. So each plan type would have three elevations. We believe on offering, to offer five or six different plans, so that's 15 to 18 elevations. So we just picked the ones that we thought represented pretty much the look that we think that the community will have. For example, there wasn't a single-story elevation there, but we certainly have a single-story plan that we do plan on offering, and we may build a few of those, but to not bore you with too many elevations at this point, we just wanted to give you a flair of what the community would look like.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Who's my traffic guru? Who's the traffic man? There we go. All right, my man. Come on up here.
Good evening, Mayor Protem and council members. I'm Cole Daggenhart with Exalt Engineering, 304 West Millbrook Road in Raleigh. Be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Yes, sir. So could you speak to the 1370 trips and the impact that it would do to Vincent Road and the roads that's surrounding there?
Yes, sir. So the trips result in 101 a.m. peak hour trips and 135 p.m. peak hour trips. The increase in delay from the build-out conditions without the development, the difference between that and the build-out with the development is quite small. It's, the maximum increase in delay is 3.8 seconds at the signalized intersection of Glen Laurel and Vincent in the p.m. peak hour.
So that's based upon, you said it would be minimal, correct?
That's correct.
So it's based upon because it's a 139 units?
I'm sorry, not the minimum. That's the maximum increase in delay across all movements.
Okay, that's fair. So that's, of course, is based upon 139 units?
Yes, sir.
So at what point, how many units would it be when it would be a concern?
There, are you saying that...
So in essence, you're telling me at 139 units, hey, councilman, it's good to go. No, not a whole lot of impact on traffic.
That's right. It's quite minimal. It's a level-of-service C in the peak hour, sir.
My question is, so at what amount of units is, would be impact?
That impact is assuming all units are fully built out.
Yeah, but I guess what I'm asking, let me help you out here, would it be 159? Would it be 179? Would it be 180? One of the issues I have with traffic in now, on my second year, and I keep saying this, especially with you traffic guys, man, is that nobody tells me. Everybody says traffic is good to go, okay? But every time I'm coming in here, now traffic gets worse, worse, worse. When I'm coming in on 70, I'm almost all the way back to the Walmart, and that's happening for a reason, all right? But for some reason, there's not a traffic guy ever tells me that, hey, you know what? And I mean, in all fairness, I'll play the game, I'll be fair. If you guys could say 149, 159, 179, 180, but nobody ever has an answer, but yet still, me along with other citizens here in Clayton are stuck in traffic, so that's why I'm asking this question.
I understand, sir. I can tell you that we haven't analyzed, you know, we use traffic analysis software to analyze the volumes to determine what the impact would be, and we haven't done that analysis to see, you know, what is the maximum amount of trip generation for this area that would kind of maximize the road. I can tell you that the current annual, average annual daily traffics along Vincent is 5,970 vehicles, that's of 2022, and along Glen Laurel is 4,400 vehicles as of 2019. So those are DOT, ADT values, and the planning level estimate for capacity for a two-lane facility, such as, that facility is around 12,000 vehicles per day, so it's at about, you know, along Vincent, at about half capacity, but that's really looking at the roadway, not looking at intersection analysis.
Thank you.
Any other questions for me?
Mr. Avery?
In reference to just public safety...
In reference to just public safety, you know, when it comes to police and firemen, do you feel like the roads are, you know, safe enough to maneuver around as well?
Are you speaking to the internal roadway network for the development?
You got it.
May be a better question for Andrew.
Okay.
Thank you.
And I would like to point out that in regard to the traffic numbers, we're going beyond whether they are, what they recommended in the TIA with the road frontage and the widening. Those are ameliorating effects that are beyond what was called for in the TIA. So then the numbers will be better than those that have been presented.
Yes, sir, appreciate it.
Ms. Archer?
Thank you. I've got a couple of questions. One regarding amenities and one about architectural features. Could you, I know there was a dog park and a playground, I believe, included in the plans, but it seems like you mentioned some other amenities, and I just wanted to be clear on what those were, perhaps some arrangement with the YMCA.
Yes, it's recreational opportunities for the residents. They're in the process of discussing with the Neuse River Club and the Riverwood for opportunities for these residents to be able to join those clubs and provide additional recreation. There are five different facilities within a five-mile area that we're in conversations with to make those arrangements to provide the residents with additional recreational opportunities inclusive, including like a one-year membership option that we're looking at also. Those details are not set in stone at this point, but they are undergoing at this point.
Thank you. And regarding the architectural features, there were obviously several that you agreed to. So that's great. Did you, I noticed it's vinyl siding. Did you consider hardy plank? And if not, is that something you would be willing to add as a condition?
I'll bring John back up, since he's the man for that.
I would say we certainly would consider hardy plank, and there are neighborhoods that have hardy plank. I can tell you in your High Gate community, we don't have hardy plank, and we use a premium siding. We use a thicker siding, vinyl siding. And we really like to accent with our shake or board and battent or, or we've proffered a 25% brick or stone either around the garage or a water table that wasn't in these elevation pictures or the columns that we do out front. So I think that what we're trying to do is provide the best value to provide something that I believe we'll be able to sell in the high 300s to mid 400s at least, if not more. And I think it'll be two years before we're selling to anybody, but I do believe with current market rate, I can tell you, for being in the business for 23 years, a buyer would rather put options inside the house than the outside of a house, is what I've found. So we're just, it's just adding to the price to a standard level that I've told you. I'm happy to give them an option. It certainly can be an option for a hardy plank. And I would tell you that out of 100, we might have one that would actually pay for it. But I understand as a councilperson, it's certainly a question that's been asked many, many times. And you need a mix of everything. And I think, given the development and what we have and what we've successfully been able to do at High Gate, we've really, I think, created a really pretty neighborhood, so.
Thank you for that.
Sure.
Are there any other questions of the applicant?
Does this conclude your presentation, or do you have more?
If there are no further questions, it does. I would just leave you with the fact that this project fits in perfectly with the comprehensive plan. Improvements will be made to the roadways that will help the residents of the area in addition to our future residents, and we appreciate your time.
Thank you, sir. As this is a public hearing, we'll open the floor for the public comments. If you will approach, and please state your name and address for the clerk.
Counsel, thank you for the opportunity. My name is Chris Hopper. I live at 909 Burke Dale Drive. My lot shares a boundary with the proposed project. Before I speak, can I ask one additional question of the traffic impact analysis? I've struggled to find an answer. That question would be, when was the study conducted? Did it in fact take into account traffic associated with the elementary school? I've struggled to find an actual answer to this question.
The study, the peak hour traffic or the p.m. peak period, we performed traffic counts and we performed those early. So we started around 3:45 p.m. to account for the 3:55 p.m. exit from the elementary school.
And what was the date of the analysis?
Let's see here. July of 2022.
Thank you, sir. Well, I'll ask for order in here. This is a council meeting, and we're not going to have public comment until it's your time to speak.
I can speak to that. We, that was the date that the traffic study was submitted, but we collected traffic counts ahead of that. I can provide the date that the counts were collected on as well, if that would be helpful. Traffic counts were collected on Thursday, May 12th of 2022 while school is in session.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you for the opportunity. I've heard multiple answers to that. So again, 909 Burke Dale Drive, my property abuts the proposed project. I'm here to speak to you tonight about consistency of character and adequacy of infrastructure. As far as consistency of character goes, look at the map. You can see the proposed lots relative to those adjacent to what is proposed. I understand the zoning would be the same as, I'm a Glen Laurel resident, and it would be the same as ours is. But 6,500 acres, or 6,500 square feet, mine's one of the smaller ones, and it's 3/4 of an acre. What's being proposed is not consistent. So along those lines, I would request increase the landscape buffer to 50 feet. And because these properties will be 20 feet above and looking directly down into my daughter's bedrooms, mandatory 20-foot-wide opaque vegetative screening along the boundary, just to give us a little bit of privacy. Okay, that's what I wanted to say there. Adequacy of infrastructure. My oldest daughter went to Corinth older high school. She had classmates, and this was six years ago, she had classmates sitting on the floor next to her because there weren't adequate resources. My two youngest now attend Clayton High School. Their drop-off lines now extend out onto US 70 rush hour traffic so that those students can wait to get into a building that the assistant principal's grandparents studied in. It is in dire need of renovation. I understand that Clayton students will be transferred to Wilson Mills High while those renovations are conducted. Wilson's Mills High isn't yet under construction. We keep piling kids into these facilities, and they don't have a voice of their own. I came here tonight looking forward to speak to a former colleague and friend of mine, Ben Howell, Planning Director. You guys seem to be going through them like water. I'm not sure if you think that's a good look, but it's not. Because those folks are our only voice. And for them to be shut out the door as frequently as they are, it feels like a personal run to us. It was mentioned that Riverwood Middle would also accommodate these students. My kids left Riverwood Middle last year. There aren't enough teachers. One of my students went through Math 2 last year, being taught via YouTube video. She didn't do well on the final exam, as you can imagine. She had nobody to ask questions of. She's now forced to retake Math 1 in high school, when she should be at Math 2. We're failing our kids. Traffic study apparently took into account the elementary school around the corner. What it did not take into account is the recently approved municipal sports complex up the road. I'm not sure if it included traffic deaths that we're seeing along Glen Laurel Road. One of them had a blind spot at the recreational park. Coming up over the hill, I don't know how often you guys have done this drive, but in the evenings, you're blinded by the sun. People want to walk across the street to get to their home. One of them was killed about a month ago on Glen Laurel Road because of other blind spots. Head-on collision resulted in a body ejected from the vehicle. This is one of the most dangerous corridors in the area. I do not believe the transportation study is adequate for what is being proposed. I would request that at a minimum, you require a peer review of what was done in the transportation study before you approve this. No eye is more critical than a competitor. And we need an honest assessment of what's being introduced to our community. It's not consistent. The infrastructure is not adequate. And I'm afraid we're just rubber-stamping ourselves into a very bad living area. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Hello, I'm Derek Everwine. I'm the President of the Glen Laurel Homeowners Association. I live at 200 Hind Drive. And what I like to say when I'm at the planning meeting, that our homeowners association was not notified of the building of this neighborhood, okay? Glen Ridge Homeowners Association was notified. For that reason, I say this should be denied and go back to the original planning stage where we will be notified as an HOA. We have many concerns. First off, they didn't mention the bike paths, which are required as per the zoning. It wasn't until you asked them the question that they lightly mentioned the bike paths. So I do have some concern about, you know, will those bike paths show up? This is the mountain-to-sea trail, Glen Laurel to Vincent Road. They want it zoned, I mean, currently, surrounding this entire area is the RE zoning of 12,000 square foot, okay? I know that they say the CMZ does fall into the master plan 2045, but it doesn't fall into the plan for this area of Clayton. And therefore, it should remain RE. Okay, the other concern we have is they only have one repair and buffer where all their stormwater drain off is going to go. That stormwater drains into our subdivision, okay? And I hope that you all are still aware of the lawsuit that was brought against the town for erosion from the Glen Ridge subdivision. And I fear that we're going to have the same problem with this repair and buffer. And especially if they want to go with 70% impervious surface on every lot. That is unacceptable. Currently, we have 50%. That seems to work okay, but I don't see any DEQ impact study on what that stormwater runoff is going to do downstream of this subdivision. And what is it going to do to the Neuse River Basin? So that is a major effect on adjoining homeowners in neighborhoods. And in their, they said there was no adverse effect. Well, I don't think they've fully investigated adverse effects. I agree with what Chris Hopper is saying about the schools and the roadways. In fact, when we had the planning meeting, I suggested a couple redesigns of the traffic pattern. You know, we're going to have a light at Vincent Road and Glen Laurel Road. The intersection, the now four-way intersection into this neighborhood is going to end up with cars backed up when that light's red at rush hour. My suggestion was to go back to the design board and take that triangle property and make Glen Laurel Road and Vincent Road a four-way intersection where you could then come straight through and come into that property from that new little extension road. I think that's feasible. You're not going to lose any lots. You're going to lose one lot at the cul-de-sac tip, but you're going to be able to replace it at the intersection of Glen Laurel Road. On the other side, you still should just put a cul-de-sac there. And then where they have the emergency entrance, you should go down one lot and bring the road instead of a cul-de-sac up into Palmer Drive as a four-way intersection. That will help alleviate traffic issues along that road. I do have concerns when they go down to the smaller lot size and put more houses in there as far as the school property. You know, what are we going to do when they build the middle school next to Powton Elementary? And all the traffic there, okay? And then we also, I don't know if they were aware of or if they were notified that there is a 457-house neighborhood coming down Vincent Road and how that would impact the traffic study that they did, okay? I think we really need to include that in an additional traffic study to really fully look at what the effects on Vincent Road are going to be. Vincent Road with the growth coming to this area should be a five-lane road, two lanes on each side with a turn lane in the middle for the entire length. If you actually walk on Vincent Road, you can see the current cracks in the asphalt and certain sections are starting to pop out. So I really do agree that there is a traffic issue that nobody really wants to fully address. And I think you guys are the board, and you have the perfect opportunity here to start addressing those. I represent 882 houses. And I think, you know, we need to also look at environmental impact for maybe endangered bat species up there and the eastern box turtle habitat that is in that property. We don't have any environmental impact studies. Or do we have a water quality study of the runoff going into the Neuse River? So I appreciate your concern, and I think we just need to bounce this back to the planning department and really look at redesigning some of the roads around here to address that problem. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. I want to remind the audience that you conduct yourself in a public hearing as if you're in a courtroom. And we don't have hooping and hollering and clapping. We're going to have orders in here and conduct ourselves as such. Please, thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Good evening, Board. My name is Michael White. I live at 416 Neuse Ridge Drive in Glen Laurel Subdivision. And I'd like to reiterate the same as the homeowners association president. I was not contacted regarding this subdivision. According to my count, only four members of our neighborhood were contacted. And in their application, they said they're going to use Glen Laurel amenities. So we have absolutely no say about any of that. The current zoning allows for approximately 115 units, and then they want to go above and beyond that. Yet, the wastewater treatment requires an expansion before they can start. I've been here since 2003. It wasn't that long ago that we had water restrictions, especially in very dry years. And then they want to add additional requirements to, you know, additional 139 units to that. In their application, they also say that they will add loops to the water supply. And that, in that, will improve the water quality and/or pressure. I do not have a formal degree in fluid flow. However, I was part of the Naval Nuclear Power Program where I did have quite a few fluid flow classes. When you add loops, it never improves pressure, unless you're going to add pumps. And the only way it's going to improve quality is if you're assuming that there isn't enough flow in the system to keep everything circulating, which, based on the population of Johnson County and Clayton, I find that hard to believe. Clayton's website says we are the fastest-growing town within the fastest-growing county within North Carolina. And to point out one major flaw in the traffic study is it only assumes a 3% traffic growth. growth. We all know that we are way above that. And as a former rider of my bicycle along that area, because I work at Griffles, I need to also touch on the fact that I don't ride my bicycle anymore because of that traffic problem. I do not feel safe because there is not sufficient barriers between myself and cars, not to mention the amount of backed-up cars on the normal day-to-day. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak?
I just have a few things. My name is Deborah Anderson Farmer, and I stay in Glen Ridge subdivision. When he was talking about the traffic, I leave my house at 4:45 a.m. Sometime I have to sit there from five to seven minutes before I can turn left. So at 4:45 a.m., it's already traffic on that road. Also, now, school, you can't hardly, coming back home, come, school, it's a lot more traffic. Traffic is backed up. Now, he said they got their numbers, but we see it for ourself, the ones who live in Glen Ridge and in Glen Laurel. We see this traffic every day. It get back, I've been there since 1995. No, it wasn't that bad, but more houses you keep putting, the worse the traffic gets. Also, another thing, I'm not in the city limits. Glen Ridge, we can burn because we're not in the city limits, and a lot of us do buy, we burn pine cones, pine straw, everything. My house, I'm on Sneed Drive, so where they're going to start those houses is going to be right behind my house. I'm not going to stop burning. They already done called the fire department on me once. That's fine, but that smoke is going to goes right towards that subdivision. And I'm not, because I'm not in the city limits, I can burn. They going to be in the city limits, so they can't. So no, I'm not going to stop doing what I have always doing. I'm sorry for the neighbors, but that's the thing. And, and everyone in, that he was talking about the size of the lots, everybody in our subdivision is on an acre lot. We have our own wells. So I also would like to ask them a question. Where I live at on Glen, on Sneed Drive, how far are you going to come behind my house? Because there is a hill, there are buckets. How far are you going to come close to my house? There is a buffer there. So are you going to come and cut down trees on that, on that? Because there are trees. Are you going to come in and cut down trees so you can put your buffer?
No, we would prefer to not cut down trees. One condition is to utilize as much existing vegetation and part our buffer. No buffer is there, then we will replant as sufficient to the type C buffer that's blocked on our property, not on any of the others.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Susan Moore. I live in Glen Laurel on Kensington Court. I just would like for someone to show me where Burke Dale Drive is, if you could, on this map.
It's over to the right side of the screen.
So I just want to know, three or four lots supposedly have been sold, and they're going to be connected to your neighborhood. Do you know what I'm talking about?
We don't, we don't have any lots.
Okay, so none of those lots are going to be connected to your subdivision and be on Burke Dale Drive?
Not as a part of ours.
Not as a part of your subdivision? So there's no road coming from those lots on Burke Dale into your subdivision? Okay. I just wanted that stated here. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, sir.
Good evening. My name is John Scarpa. I live in Glen Laurel. I live at 1103 Neuseridge Drive, and I have a couple of concerns, one of which is that you gentlemen and ladies must be aware, I know you already are, because I know you're aware of the, the planning commissions, the planning boards' consideration of another project that is going to be on Vincent Road. We're looking at these things piecemeal, that is us, and you need to look at it in a global aspect. And if you do that, you realize that the traffic calculations that have been discussed both, by both parties, both applicants, recognize that Vincent Road right now is not sufficient for what traffic is already there, and the only way to address that then is either to deny the applicants the additional properties or to turn Vincent Road into a two-lane in each direction road, which will totally, completely change the character of the neighborhood. I hate to make this personal, but for me, it is very personal because I moved from New York down to North Carolina to get a different kind of lifestyle. I've seen what can happen firsthand when there isn't a sufficient planning for the entire area, and you do this in little tiny segregated spots. And that's what happened to Long Island after Long Island was the first community of suburbs. It's a disaster, and I'm watching it happen here right now before my eyes going, oh my God, I, I went from the frying pan into the fire. It's, please don't let that happen here. This kind of density is crazy. I live in Glen Laurel. I moved to a suburban area where there's, I'm surrounded by farms and things. It's great. You're going to totally change the character of, of the neighborhood. And even I, when I, I'm retired, thank God, I don't have to get up and go to work in the morning, but I see what my neighbors are going through. When the school is, is in session, there are cars lined up in Glen Laurel for, you know, 20 or 30 cars at a time, and you can't make a left-hand turn on, from Vincent onto Glen Laurel. It's almost impossible. So what's going to happen is if you put a traffic light, you're going to send traffic through the neighborhood because people are going to take shortcuts. Everybody uses ways these days, and they'll take a shortcut through the neighborhood. Watch the density, please. We don't need to turn this into a city. Let's keep the rural characteristics of Clayton. Growth is fine, but it's got to be controlled, and this is not control. So I'm asking you, please, to take into consideration those things. Don't, let's turn this into another Long Island. I don't want it. I moved away from it to escape it. Don't let it follow me here. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else wishing to speak? Seeing none, I'll turn it over to council for discussion.
If you, if at all possible, if you're going to allow any of these subdivisions to be built, and I appreciate the courtesy you're giving me to let me continue to speak, don't let them clear-cut. It destroys the character of the neighborhood. It looks like a desert. It, it'll look like a desert for the next 20 years until trees grow again. So clear-cutting has got to be completely stopped. First of all, even if you're not an environmentalist tree hugger, you know that, that trees are good for the environment, and if you cut them all down, it's like cutting the rainforests. So please, take those things into consideration. Thank you again.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak before I turn it over to council? All right, at this time, we'll close the public hearing and turn it over to town council for discussion. Mr. Sims.
So a couple of things. I want to address some of the comments. At the end of the day, I appreciate everyone who came up and spoke. First of all, and we've said this, and I imagine we'll continue to say this, you have to understand some of the parameters that are placed on this council. What are the things that we don't, we cannot do? We have no, it's anything to do with schools. I'm quite sure Mayor Protem, who's been up here longer than anybody, knows the, the things with that. So when you talk about schools, we can't make any guess with the school board. So by all means, I say, if anything, make sure you go to your school board meetings and go in front of them and let them know as far as the capacities of things. There was mention about personnel, when we were talking about our planning directors, how we go through the planning directors. A lot of those are personnel issues. So when you go up and address personnel issues, that is what they are, personnel. So the reference to our water and how we come about doing water and the allocations, I will stack my engineering department up against anybody here in the state. You do an outstanding job as far as the way they go about those procedures and figuring out as far as the water allocations. The gentleman that referred to being from New York, I am from Detroit, and as my wife said, likes to say, I am from Detroit. And with that being said, I understand as far as we start talking about density, but there is no way, shape, or form, and I say this with the utmost confidence, if you've been to Long Island, and I have been to Detroit, we're not even close to any of those, and it'd be, I'll be dead and gone before we even get to that extent. I do have some concerns with lot size with this particular project because of that area, and also with as far as the, some traffic concerns, especially as what it means as far as the allocations that have been placed into, and you know, all RTIs, they're the same thing, you know, they, they punch these things into and it spits out a formula. But at the end of the day, I'll still keep saying what I said to Jim, and I appreciate you coming up and stating what you said, is that something ain't spitting out something because at the end of the day, our traffic, you know, you know, continues to increase. But that's just my, my thoughts. I don't know how much as far as with the applicant and any concessions they would like to make as far as on lot size. But yeah, that's pretty much where I'm standing right now.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Casey.
I want to echo some of Councilman Sims' comments. I believe in personal property rights. I believe if you own some land, then it's yours, and you have the right to do what you necessarily see fit with as long as it's safe and it meets the general guidelines. In this situation, this parcel was owned RE residential estate, and we have, and I understand there's some steep slopes and there's some wetlands on this, this property, so even if it's owned RE, we have some open, we have some accommodations for developers, and in that situation, it has minimum lot sizes. To me, 6,500 square foot minimum lot size is more equivalent to a, an R8 zoning designation. And to me, I, I can't support this project with a minimum lot size of 6,500 square feet. We have the RE zoning designation for a reason, and even we have the open space, or, excuse me, the open space subdivision zoning in a RE subdivision for a reason. So I think we need to be, go with our, our zoning designation for that area, and it will be compliant with our, that zoning designation, the master, master plan in that area too, because it'll be low-density. It's just lower density than what the developer's trying to bring to the table in this situation.
Ms. Arch.
Thank you. I appreciate hearing everyone's comments here tonight, and I always do appreciate hearing from residents, and you're in the right place to voice your concerns. I wanted to give you one quick heads up about the notification criteria, so we were just talking about this today. And in terms of this public meeting, the state law only requires that you notify adjacent property owners. So if that's something that you have an issue with about your notification rights, then you probably should be contacting your state legislatures about that. So I just wanted to throw that out there. I heard many things brought up, and that's traffic, additional houses, water, wastewater, you know, having neighbors where you didn't have neighbors before. And I understand all of those concerns, but actually, this property is well-suited for single-family residential development. I respect the fact that that's what was proposed. It wasn't proposed to be multifamily and extremely dense. It was with, within the bounds of our growth plan, and, and so that is going to happen on this parcel someday, and I think it's, you know, we're all kind of wrapping our heads around that. But where I do have concerns, similar to my other council members here, and, and just for, you know, public education, when you're looking at a rezoning, always included in the online materials are the, the zoning criteria, and in this case, there are seven. And so that's, you know, if you're, if you're doing your research, kind of want to focus in on those. And for myself, I have concerns about criteria number two and three. I consider this development to be near one of Clayton's premier neighborhoods. So while I understand that the overall density is in line with our town plans, it's, again, the proposed lot sizes that concern me, especially going down as small as 6,500 square feet. That sort of lot size is consistent with a conservation or open space subdivision, but in this case, it's not like this particular application goes above and beyond to conserve open space. Most of the open space on this parcel or these parcels is not buildable anyway legally. So looking at the surrounding area, I just, this application in its current form doesn't feel to me to be in the direction we want for this part of town. It doesn't have the lot sizes, the design features, or amenities that bring balance to that use, to that area of town. I do have things about this proposal that I like, so I'm, I'm kind of got one foot in each camp here right now. Again, I like that this proposal is for completely single-family homes. I do feel that's an appropriate use for this, looking at the surrounding area. I appreciate the sidewalk along the frontage, the four parking spaces per dwelling. That's something we hear a lot about in our single-family subdivisions. The roadway improvements, looking from, as I drive those roads quite frequently, I think the turn lanes and storage that the TIA called for would, they do seem appropriate to me as well as signalizing that intersection. I like that you're trying to get agreements with local recreation facilities and your willingness to upgrade to Hardy Plank upon request. So I see some pros and cons here, and that's where I'm sitting at this moment.
Thank you. Anyone else?
For me, my biggest concern is traffic, and as had been discussed previously, and Mr. Sims especially said, I think the TIA system as a whole is flawed, and, you know, from the developer's point of view, they're responsible for their development. But at what point is somebody looking globally at the entire area, and, and what is the, the impact, the total impact? And, you know, I've been advocate for a long time that we need to get the TIA system off of the developer and put, put that hat on ourselves so that we can look at regions and not just parcels and not just lots. It needs to be regions so that we can plan appropriately for an entire region of town, not just for one development at a time with their independent individual traffic analysis. I just think that is a flawed system, and, and I don't like it. I do think we're, the positive is that it is single-family, and I'm certainly appreciative for that because we get a lot of multifamily coming at us. I think the, the positive is that this project is proposed as single-family, but the, my hang-up for me is the impact on traffic and safety. If there's no one else, I'll entertain the wishes of the council.
I'm inclined to have further discussion about this particular development, and, and that's fine if the rest of council is not in agreement with that. I see no major problem with tabling it until the next meeting if that's agreeable to the applicant as well as my fellow council members. If you are ready for a motion, by all means.
I'm fine with tabling it, but only if the applicant might want to take it. I'm fine with tabling it, but only if the applicant might want to take a look at some of these things that we talked about, and maybe looking at coming back to the table, whether it be larger lot size or, you know, again, I'm not saying they have to do this, but I'm just thinking this up, you know, something to do with the, you know, expanding the roads and the frontage or something. I don't know. Some of the things that have been discussed this evening.
Mr. Casey?
I would just like to know what the obstacles are if the applicant couldn't just do it under the open space residential estate zoning designation it's already under. And there's obviously a reason they went the conditional zoning route. If it's for the density, I'm not sold on it. So I'm okay tabling it if the applicant's willing to have those conversations. But if they're not, I'll just say just move forward and go ahead and vote on it tonight.
Can we call the applicant?
Yes.
Sorry.
I'm absolutely for tabling it. For me, I think it's all about being consistent with our growth plan and how we grow because that's super important. So if we need to come up with more conditions to make sure that it's in line with our purpose and our plan, I'm okay with doing that.
We would be amenable to that and working with staff and getting any additional information the board needs. I mean, and I will point out that I moved to Johnston County in 1972, and I'm glad that it's not the same place it was then. I mean, there was a lot to recommend it then, but change is coming to Johnston County.
I understand. And I think, I think based on the feedback we've got, rather than make a hasty decision tonight, I'm more in favor of tabling this so that we can have a lot more time to think about it and make the best decision for the community.
Mayor Pro Tem?
Sir, the public hearing is closed. We can't entertain anybody else. I'm sorry.
Yes, sir.
Is there a list of specific things you would like staff to work with the applicant on before we bring this back to you?
12,000 square foot lots.
I think we've heard traffic. We've heard, Ms. Archer, what were your concerns?
Um, I, let's see. Yes, I was interested in further clarification on the status of the amenities that they're discussing with other recreation organizations in town. The applicant already seemed amenable to Hardy Plank, but if that could be clarified as well. Any other design features that they may be willing to accommodate, that could be increased masonry, other design features that they've, that they may want to bring to the table. I think that's it for me. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Just quick comment. What he said, you're 110% correct, sir. We are, growth is coming. It ain't really coming. It's here. But the importance is, is how we grow. And that's what we're up here trying to ensure, sir.
I appreciate everybody's comments and appreciate the public that came, you know, to show, to speak and let your voice be heard. These processes are tough. And, you know, when you're sitting up here, it's more of a, and more of a judicial role. You're having to really make sure that you're fair to everyone because developers certainly have rights, but also do the homeowners. And, you know, we have to weigh the right thing for both parties, not just for one side or the other. And I agree, I grew up here, and if it weren't for growth, we wouldn't have these nice places to eat downtown. When I graduated high school, Main Street was closed at 5:00 in the afternoon. There was nobody else on it, you know. Growth did bring us a lot of great things to Clayton. And as Mr. Sims said, you know, we, it is a better place, but we just have to be smart and careful how we grow. I'll entertain the council's desire.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, I would like to, well, before I make this motion, if we table the conditional zoning, do I also need to table the wastewater resolution?
I would characterize it as just a motion to continue the decision until a date certain and pick a date certain either 30 or 60 days out. And yes, include both items.
Okay. And can that be in one motion, both items? Okay.
I would like to make a motion to continue adoption of ordinance 2023-09-02 and resolution 2023-70 for 30 days.
Second. We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Matter of clarification, it might not be exactly 30 days. You mean to the, to the next, the second meeting in October.
Thank you. Until the second meeting in October.
Thank you.
Is that right?
Thank you.
The first meeting in November? Would it be the first meeting in, pardon, the first meeting in November? Thank you.
All right. Time flies. Okay. At this time, I'll call for a 10-minute recess.
All right, we'll call a meeting back to order and next up is Clayton Raleigh Pump Station Improvements Bid Award Shannon Poole.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor Protem, Town Council, Town Manager. I'm Shannon Poole, Engineering Technician for the Town of Clayton. And you have two items for approval. One is a bid award and the other is adoption of resolution. For Clayton to Raleigh Pump Station Project, it includes electrical, mechanical, and structure components to allow the pump station to increase capacity flow to Raleigh. Let's see, we received three bids for this project and the lowest bidder was actually found not to be a responsible responsive bidder. So we went to the next lowest bidder and that was Thale Construction for the bid amount of $2,217,000 to 1904. The project has a duration of just a little under a year. Staff and procurement have reviewed the bids and they are in agreeance and request to award the contract to Thale and authorize the town manager or designatee to execute construction contract and any change orders required to deliver the project. One thing to note is we did receive some notice that there will be a little bit of funding available for this project, so more to come on that later. And if there are any questions, happy to answer them.
Does anyone have any questions? I'll entertain a motion. Mr. Casey.
Motion to adopt Resolution 2023-74.
And to award the bid.
Oh, and to award the bid, sorry.
Second. We have a motion in the second all in favor.
Aye.
And then the opposed and the motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Shannon. Next up, we have the ARPA Stormwater Planning Grant for downtown Clayton.
Good afternoon, Mayor Protem, Members of Town Council. I am Knight Chris, Joshua Baird, Engineering Director. Chris was unable to make it tonight. A quick item here before you related to a downtown master plan grant. As part of the American Rescue Plan Act, there was some study money available. Town submitted for $400,000 to do a stormwater asset inventory condition assessment, capital improvement planning, some operations and maintenance planning, as well as some stormwater modeling of the core downtown area. We were awarded $400,000 for that and the item for you is two items. One is a resolution to accept the grant and formally accept that offer. And the second one is a budget amendment to set up the funding such that we can enter into a contract for that work. There is an offsetting revenue, so no net effect to the overall budget. And with that, I'll take any questions.
Any questions? I'll entertain a motion. Mr. Casey.
I'll adopt, I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution 2023-75 and also adoption of ordinance 2023-10-01.
Second. All in favor. Any opposed? And the motion carries. Thank you.
Was that for both the budget and?
They put both in the same motion, yes. All right, next up is Legend Park.
All right, again Joshua Baird, so as many of you recall, we had some preliminary conversations about Legend Park and the pre-regulatory landfill that is beneath Legend Park. Provided some information in your packet in your agenda to review ahead of time. Recap, it's been going on for about four years. The state's had this on the list of these pre-regulatory landfills and been working with the engineering department to develop what is called a RAP or Remedial Action Plan. That is the state's program to go through and find a mitigation plan for these that are either having some environmental impact and they have a risk assessment program that they go through and score the different landfills throughout the state and the risks to the environment, several factors that they run through. We've been working with the state for a while and there's been a lot of studies. There's been some trash characterization, gas composition, really different drilling to figure out exactly what the boundary of that is. And the state has completed the RAP, the Remedial Action Plan, that has gone out to public comment as part of the process for the state is to put that out for public comment. It came back on September 2nd and there were not any comments on that. The showing here, just a general graphic depiction of what is included in that RAP. It is basically pulling the waste away from the stream, so going in and doing some remediation work to pull that back away from it and relocate it on site. The state has found that it's cost prohibitive to completely truck and dispose of the material. So the mitigation plan is to basically cap with soil cover and create a wide space area there where the trash and what is in that previous landfill is covered. There's some geotextiles around the slopes that will stabilize the area for the majority of the site. As you can see here in the image, there will be an area up top somewhat plateaued that is relatively flat and will be grassed area. In the plan, there cannot be any shrubs or trees with it. We have been working with the folks at the state to come up with a plan such that the town can retain an area that could be used for parking as a trailhead. So you can see this area here is an area that has been designated to remain currently will be a gravel trailhead, but there are some options that we worked with them in terms of what we can do with that in the future. Another piece to this plan is removal of the trash that is below what is a future drive entrance. If you recall, the approval for Villages at Parkview, as I have up right here, there was a negotiated and coordinated entrance, full access entrance into Villages at Parkview that aligned with, I believe that is Parkview Drive on the other side. There is a porch off a right in, right out as their other access point. This has currently been used as a full access, however, that is to be converted to a right in, right out. This entrance drive installed and it does include storm as well as water lines for redundancy into the site. And so in order to do that and to create that public, we don't want to be building that over any sort of materials that may jeopardize the stability of it. So we worked with the state to get that area cleaned up as well. The, that project is currently bonded by the developer, so when the state is able to go in and do the remediation, the developer will be coming back in after that to install the roadway storm sidewalk as part of that. So we've been able to work through that and like I said, I've got to this remedial action plan. There still will be, I'll note, there's a couple of sections of waste boundary that will not be removed due to some constraints with the adjacent property, a couple of small spots there, but they will be protected and covered. To be able to move forward with this, ultimately, the state must sign some perpetu, some deed restrictions in perpetuity that says what we can, what we will not do with the site. We will be responsible for maintaining it, for cutting it, for keeping certain signage ups. And there's a certification that staff will have to do once a year that we've been following those deed restrictions. There'll also be a notice plat, the plat that actually defines what the waste area boundary is and provides those limitations on that. So limitations are just on that waste boundary and not the entire piece of property. So we're not limited in what we can do others. Certainly had a lot of conversations at many levels about this project and trying to make the best fit for the town. Certainly is something that we do want to see move forward. We feel like we are to a point through the process where I think this is the best approach and what we can get here. And so we are recommending to proceed with the notice plat and the deed restrictions for the property. The deed restrictions have been reviewed by the town's legal staff and team and we are proposing to or seeking for approval for the town count or town manager or his designatee to sign the deed restrictions and notice plats that we can get the project moving forward. And with that, I'll take any questions.
Any questions? Mr. Casey.
Actually, I have a couple of comments. I'm excited to see this project come to fruition. I know we were not sure if this is going to happen soon or if this is going to be 10 years from now, but I guess one of the things, I have some people that live in the Parkview community and I think one of them was here tonight, but they must have left after the conditional zoning hearing. How are we notifying the residents in that area? Because I know it's going to get a lot of attention. We've already gotten a lot of feedback, you know, what happened to the park, why is the grass not being cut? So I think, you know, I don't know if we need to work with the PIO or so, just how we can communicate and pass that message along to the surrounding neighbors so they're aware of it.
Sure, yeah. So I do not know if the state has any formal plan themselves, but we certainly will do everything to work through the PIO office and be sure that we release some information, hopefully to the HOAs, surrounding property owners. We do feel like that is our, part of our due diligence as well. The state may have some additional stuff on their end, but we'll be sure that we run something concurrently as well.
Awesome, thank you.
Anyone else? I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion that we move forward.
Second.
We have a motion in the second all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries. Thank you, Joshua. And next up is our update to system development fees.
All right, so I'm going to get some help with this one. I'm going to invite up Robert Chambers. Many of you have met Robert before. He is with Black and Beach. This item before you here is related to an update of the system development fees. Provided some additional information in your packets ahead of time in terms of really what the system development fee is and what that approach. And so tonight, I'm going to have and ask Robert to run through a quick kind of synopsis of what the analysis was. Keep in mind, the analysis comes up with what the maximum possible amount that can be charged for capacity is. Once he goes through the technical exercises, I'll come back up and speak to just a proposed implementation plan. And so we've also got Robert Mackay here, Finance Director. If there's any other questions from that side of things, he's available as well. And with that, I'll introduce and turn it over to Robert Chambers.
Members of council, thank you very much for allowing us to be here to present today. As I go through this deck, please do not hesitate to ask questions or to stop me as you see fit. Okay, so I'll just get into it. So we'll talk about the purpose of system development fees. I'll give a basic approach, a basic overview of what we call the accepted fee development approaches. We'll talk about the town's current situation. We'll review the maximum allowable calculation and then talk about the conclusion. As I say, we're here just to give an overview of the methodology and the basis of what we did. So getting into it, you know, what is a, you know, system development fee, also known as an impact fee? You know, I'm not going to read everything that's here, but what it is, is a charge that must be consummate or align with the nature of service that's required from a specific customer, a group of customers, and new development. We have, we have a basis that we call rational nexus and the principle or the meaning behind rational nexus is the nature of the service that's required and the cost to provide that service or the cost to furnish that service should align. Currently, the definition that's placed on this slide is outlined in the current North Carolina House Bill 436, which basically is the guideline by which system development fees should be charged, developed, and monitored for all municipalities for water and sewer municipalities in North Carolina. So some generally accepted approaches. The first approach is the buy-in approach. The buy-in approach states that you have an existing system with existing customers and as such, every new customer has to reserve a portion of that capacity in the existing system. Okay? So you have an existing system and a new customer is coming in, your existing customers have invested in the system. Every new customer has to reserve a portion of that capacity and a portion of that investment in the existing system. The incremental approach states that if you're going to develop or expand your system to benefit a certain group of customers, for example, that group of customers must pay. In a lot of cases, most cases, you have systems like yours that have existing capacity and are looking to implement new capacity. So in that case, we apply what we call the combined systems approach where there's a proportionate share of the existing and the new capacity that's dedicated to SDCs and then we go about calculating the fee as such. And this, this, this approach is outlined as well as a part of HB 436. So what's the town's current situation? You know, as a part of HB 36 is recommend, 436, I'm sorry, it's recommended that SDC should be looked at at least every or looked at every five years. And this guidance kind of guides how we go about doing it and looking at the fees. So that's a regulatory situation that's going on for you as it relates to your current situation. Secondly, you're looking at implementing new capacity in your system as it relates to your existing wastewater treatment plant project, as you look forward to address how you're going to plan for that next increment of water supply. All those capital costs have an impact in the calculation of the fee. Secondly, the cost of goods, the cost of item, just the cost of everything has increased over the last few years and that's also having an impact and driving the cost of your CIP, the cost of your requirements. So that's another consideration. You also have the fact that you are seeing growth in this region and as, as a result of that growth, you know, you can see it in two, in two instances, organic growth, which is the natural addition of customers, and then growth in the industries that you serve and the requirement of service. Okay, so that's growth, that's also affecting your system. So ultimately, when you look at all these considerations and variables, you know, it comes with then having an impact on how you serve that growth and the cost of reserve that next increment of capacity for that next customer that's going to connect to your system. So that becomes the basis of what the town is going through currently. You know, not to go in detail as it relates to each of these numbers, but, but basically how this process works is you have existing capacity, you have your rated capacity for your water and wastewater in your sewer system, you have a portion of that capacity that's been utilized by your existing customers. So whatever portion is not being utilized will go towards the development of the SDC, SDF. In addition, you have new capacity that you're adding so that existing unutilized capacity and that new capacity is then put together and put towards the development of the SDC, SDF. That then becomes the basis of the combined systems approach. So all we're doing here is just going through what the numbers would look like. So as a part of the combined systems approach, we look at assessing the cost of your existing system. We get a cost and look at the units associated with the existing system. We also look at your CIP, okay, and your existing assets and the CIP becomes a cost basis of the approach. Then we look at calculating what we call the capacity standard. So for the typical customer on your system, what is their flow characteristic? What, what do they typically use? And then that becomes a basis by which we look at how to assess the capacity and the requirement of that next customer coming onto the system. Essentially, when we're done looking at all the costs and the typical Essentially, when we're done looking at all the costs and the typical capacity, then we calculate the maximum allowable fee. Oh, I went a little fast here. Sorry about that. We calculate the maximum allowable fee, and it's the system unit cost times a capacity standard, and that gives you the fee. So looking at the maximum allowable fee, starting with the water system. Currently, the total cost that would go towards the calculation of the fee would be about 113.56 million. When we assess the capacity that's available to put towards calculating the SDF, we come up with a gross unit rate of about 15.42, $15.42. When you take that number and you apply that capacity standard, or what we call here the max day standard, you get a calculated fee of about 5,396. You have a carrying cost that you have to consider, you know, for every project and everything you do, you have to hold it and get it from start to finish. So a carrying cost adjustment is applied, and the maximum allowable calculation for water is $5,983. Okay? The existing fee is 2,690. Looking at the sewer side, the methodology to calculate the fee is about the same. And as you can see from a cost basis, the sewer side has higher costs. So the total cost that goes towards the fee is about 158.4 million. When we divide that number by the available capacity, we get a unit cost of capacity of about $24.41. We apply that to the capacity standard, and we get a calculated impact fee of 6,346. When we apply the carrying cost adjustment, the calculated maximum allowable fee is $7,037 as compared to the existing fee, which is 4,890. So in, in conclusion, you know, what does this mean? You know, what are we presenting? You know, we're, we're presenting the fact and the reality that Clayton is going through a lot of changes. Clayton is growing. Staff is working tirelessly. So, you know, are you by providing the necessary guidance to understand and accept this change? And as such, we're asking to, to consider some proportion of this calculated maximum allowable. In doing so, we ask that you, you do the necessary due diligence to, to understand the impact of implementing this adjustment as it relates to legal and operational impacts. What I'm going to do now is turn it back over to Mr. Baird to continue the rest of the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Robert. I want to jump through one of the slide here, and then we'll take some questions from either of us. So staff certainly recognize that this is a, a significant increase from where we're at. As, as Robert alluded to, we really dialed in, and we know what the true cost of Sam's Branch Treatment Plan is. So we, we now know in this study compared to the previous study, we know what the actual costs were, and we've seen significant rise in construction costs, COVID, war in Ukraine, materials, shortage of things that have driven up that. So there's, there's a lot that goes into now that we, we fully understand what those defined costs are, and we are starting to understand and starting to get a picture of what the needs for my water supply are, and understanding that there's some significant investment in the future to be able to bring the capacity to the town for, for the water that the town needs to continue to grow. So with that, there are several approaches, as we've alluded to. The, the study and the analysis determines what the maximum adoption could be. Through some preliminary discussions, four consideration would be a phased implementation schedule, really looking to take all from, excuse me, where we're at in terms of our existing fee and working towards an adoption of the full fee over some time. Certainly, the, the decision there is how quick do you get to your maximum and how quick do you work towards that? So, so we've put an option up before you that would be based on a tentative, bringing this back before you around the first meeting in December for formal adoption, for a new fee to go into effect on January 1st, 2024. And then with each budget adoption, the, the fee on the both water and sewer side combined going up roughly $1,200 each year. And so that is just based on the 5/8 residential meter. That's that baseline equivalency factor that we've talked about. For all other meters up to that 2-inch, it would be based on the equivalency ratios that are defined by ADVA and other industry standards for what that meter capacity is compared to the standard 5/8 residential meter. Further, we would also recommend adopting a, a per gallon rate that would also increase based on the similar schedule as, as shown here. And then everything that's above that, they would still be subject to a developer's agreement to be negotiated by the town. So this is one option. Again, it's kind of over four to five years, increasing beginning January 2024, and then increasing by $1,200, roughly some, some round numbers there, keeping it relatively even. This does allow for some, some certainty from developments to know what to anticipate as they're planning their portfolios and planning future needs. And this would be a stated schedule of increases such that these fees can be planned for, and there's no surprises with adoption each year. But this is just one option for consideration. Ultimately, staff are seeking consensus from town council to move forward with the required 45-day comment period. So we'll certainly take any questions, but ultimately, seeking your approval with a recommended plan to move forward. Again, they're still need to be adopted after a review of any comments based on the analysis or go back through that tentative December 4th there, but seeking consensus to move forward with a proposed plan of implementation as we show here, barring any significant comments. We'll be back before you for formal adoption in December. And so with that, certainly take any questions for Robert or myself.
Any questions? Mr. Sims?
So what was the formula on, how did you come up with the increase as far as you're saying a minimal one? What was the, I guess, the structure, how you came up with that?
The phased approach or back to the now?
The phased approach. The phased approach.
The phased approach could be a number of many, you know, different things. This is something that we put up for consideration of just an increase of $1,200 over the four to five years, six years thereafter we kickstart and getting us to that next cycle and not, not jumping to the max right away. But we do feel it is important to work towards the max in order to be able to fund the projects that are needed to bring the capacity to the town.
So, and I don't know if this is you, I don't know if this is Rich, but are there any type of, or can there be any type of grant, state money, something to help us out with this, or this thing is just on us?
So the costs that are associated with this assume several different funding sources to be able to pay for all the projects on the CIP. So these, these, and I'm going to look at Mr. Chambers to correct me if I'm wrong, but these calculated fees do somewhat reduce the total amount that those capital projects will be, that will cost with the assumption that there is already going to be some other, other funding sources incorporated.
You're saying these calculations is based upon other funding sources?
Assuming, or already assuming we are going to obtain some other funds, correct.
So, if I may, as a city manager, so as a part of the, the town's financing plan for the water and sewer system, you have user revenues, you have funding that comes from issuance of bonds, you have some grant and other ARPA funds that have come in, and you have SDF monies. And all these dollars are combined and looked at to see and understand how best to fund the program, the CIP, at the lowest possible cost to the customers. So this SDF is a part of that puzzle, along with all the other items I just mentioned.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Yeah, probably should have mentioned too, Mr. Chambers is also part of the group at Black and Beach that does our rate model. So decisions that are made here will then be incorporated into our FX25 rate model later this year. Anyone else? Ms. Archer?
If I can make a comment, thank you for that presentation. I did appreciate seeing what goes into that calculation. So I was kind of seeing it as a win-win for residents and the development community because we are granted through the state legislature to charge certain fees, which help our residents capture money back to maintain and grow a system that helps accommodate new development. But at the same time, you know, we're staggering that increase so that we're not sticking it to, you know, development all at once. But we do, you know, spread that out over time, which I think is a nice balance between those opposing forces. So thank you.
I agree with Ms. Archer. I think this is one of the, you know, one of the criticisms we often get is about development paying for itself and development, you know, paying its share. You know, we've got a lot of existing residents, and sure, it is a responsibility of every taxpaying citizen to help contribute towards our infrastructure. But when we have such significant expansive needs for our infrastructure, this is the way we capture that is through these fees for, from the new development. So I think it's a win-win for us. Entertain the desire of the council to move forward with this.
I'll make a motion that we move forward. Second?
A motion and a second all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen.
Mayor Protem, if I may?
Yes, sir.
Now that you've passed it, if I can in the public forum, can I invite for comments? Just want to give an update. So we will update our website. We're going to get some communication out to the community moving forward. So with the proposed plan now that we've received your consensus, and we are going to have an email address set up for comments. So we will be, again, sending information out, but ultimately, we will be receiving comments at sdfstudy@townofclaytonnc.org, and we kickstart in that 45-day period this week. So if anyone does have comments, we'll go and kickstart that and get that lined up this week. Thank you, sir.
Sounds great. Thank you. Next, we'll move to staff report, starting with the town manager.
Mr. Mayor Protem, a couple just quick things in the interest of time. One, Chief Tarred asked me to make sure that I gave a quick reminder that tomorrow, Tuesday the 3rd at 6 o'clock is the Clayton High School Homecoming Parade. We will start affecting traffic in the Fayetteville Street, Main Street, and Second Street area starting around 5:30. The total length of the procession should be less than an hour. So we do intend to have those roads back opened up somewhere around 7 o'clock, but obviously, the length of, the length of the tail will determine that at the end. So just a quick reminder that traffic downtown may be affected through that kind of 5:30 to 7 o'clock period tomorrow. Other thing, on the list of meetings that you may have seen, October 10th, we have slated as a downtown master plan input session from 4 to 6 o'clock here at Town Hall. That item may be postponed. Patrick Pierce, Economic Development Director is managing that. We're still waiting on some information from the, the consultants, but based on the timeline right now, we are looking at potentially delaying that based on that additional information. So keep an eye out. We will work through the communications department to make sure that we get that out if that is, if, if that is in fact postponed. And that's all I have for the evening.
All right. Town attorney?
No report.
Town clerk?
No report.
Other staff?
Good evening, Mayor Protem and council. Patrick Pierce, Economic Development Director. Update here on our CAMPO process, the Capital Area Metropolitan Planning Organization. So every year, there's applications for the locally administered projects program, which is LAP. This is the federal fiscal year 25 proposals and what town has gone and done a pre-submital on here. So again, LAP, it's competitive funding program through CAMPO. It's better funding directed towards the region. It's typically a 20% minimum local match, although extra points are given for additional local match given, and all local municipalities are given the opportunity to apply for these funds. So some previous notable projects, this is not all inclusive, but Sam's Brand Greenway Extension, First Street Extension, Ranch Road, which is currently being constructed, and the East Main Street Sidewalk Connector. So the one project that we submitted this year, as we've got several projects underway, was the Main Street Pedestrian Improvements. This was number two in our pedestrian plan that you all approved back in 2022 that NCDOT helped fund. So this would be the complete project, design and right-of-way and construction phases. This had started Moore Street, so the entrance to Deep River and go to approximately Smith. The total cost here would be 19, just under $2 million, so $1.95 million. We're requesting 1.365 of that with a 30% match from the town. What essentially this would do would build out a lot of pedestrian improvements that have been, that appeared in the downtown strategic plan and will likely show up in the master plan. And this is an excerpt from the adopted pedestrian plan here. Sidewalk segments from, connecting from Deep River to Proctor Place, Proctor Place to Robertson, and really complete that whole network there on the west end of town, and then pedestrian improvements at the intersections from there to Smith Street, and then the ones from Central are included in that East Main sidewalk project. So really a good improvement, I think, doing the, making the best that we can with our pedestrian infrastructure without a full-on streetscape plan here, but really improving pedestrian safety downtown with crosswalks and such. Another good news, we had two projects that we applied for last year that we did not receive funding for. We were just informed that these two projects, another project fell off, that money was rejected. So therefore, we were able to, we were offered the funding in its place. So one would be the Shotwell Road Business 70 intersection. This is one we partnered with NCDOT. There's really minimal cost to the town at all for this, and CAMPO and DOT will, combined, will have all the funding for that. So it's a $5.75 million project. It'll add a second left turn lane, a northbound Shotwell onto 70, an eastbound Business 70 onto Shotwell, and a northbound lane as you turn from, onto Shotwell from Business 70. This is my rudimentary drawing, but hopefully the arrows and the lines. I'm neither an artist or an engineer. But hopefully, that's descriptive enough for you as to what, what this project will do. The second one is a connector here. This is design and right-of-way only. So this was the number one, I guess, a portion of number one and number two. So this combined with the project we're submitting here, we'll get those sidewalks done on Main Street, and we'll complete the design and right-of-way from where the Amelia Village Apartments are there, on Amelia Church, up Robertson, past the high school, and then down west towards Deep River and more in Atkinson Street there. So that, this is essentially the corridor here for the designer right-of-way, and our hope would be next year, we could apply for the construction funding for the Amelia Church and Robertson segment there and complete number one and number two. So again, putting those approved plans that you have into action to get them hopefully funded, constructed, and on the ground and improving the town. So with that, any questions?
No questions. Thank you, Patrick. This is really good, happy news compared to what we hear a lot of times. So I hope that, I just asked that you and Public Information work to, to get the word out that we have worked very hard to advocate for these improvements, like at Shotwell and 70. You know, this has been a group effort from everybody on that side of the room and everybody on this side of the room to, to, we hear our citizens say, and that's a bad intersection, do something about it. And the good work of you and every, the other staff have seen this come to where there's light at the end of the tunnel for some relief up there. So thank you very much.
You're welcome.
We just need to make sure we tell our story that, you know, people do know that we are working on it.
Thank you. And I appreciate you recognizing I'm really the messenger here, and I'm one of many that are helping make all this stuff happen. So appreciate all the departments working on this stuff.
Thanks, Patrick.
Thank you.
All right. Richard, we're going to do the next one?
No. So assuming the length of the meeting, I gave Brandon the night off thinking the next meeting might be a better opportunity, although based on the tabling of the other event today, I'll see if Brandon will be here next week, or next meeting. Sorry.
Thank you. All right. Now we'll open the floor for informal discussion and public comment. Anyone wishing to speak, please step forward. All right, see you in a minute. I'll turn it over to council for comments. Mr. Sims?
Just a reminder, I just want to first of all, thank the chamber, because it's that time of the year that the chamber and the town are together. And it's been a long partnership, very productive one and a positive one with the Harvest Festival of October twenty-sixth through to twenty-ninth. Looking forward to it and our continued partnership with the chamber.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? The only thing I have is Chief Rains is in the audience tonight. And just remind everybody of the October sixteenth festivities at Fire Station One, starting at three o'clock with his swearing in. And we look forward to that and hope a lot of community members attend. All right, I'll entertain a motion to go into closed session to discuss a legal matter, economic development, and a personnel matter. And those statutes are referenced in the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
And we'll now go into closed session. Thank you.
Okay, we've returned from closed session with no action and will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
And we're adjourned. Thank you. Good night.